With him and one of us, just to go over there and see if we can negotiate it. Not to hide anything from the public. No decisions will be made over there and the public will still be, you know, y'all are gonna be here if we make that decision at 1.1, 1, $900,000, $800,000, whatever we make a decision, y'all will be involved in it.
And James, the way I understood the proposal, Mr. Pete explained to me is he, that we would make the contract contingent on approval with the county commissioners of that budget on it. And we're, alright, we're gonna make a contract with these people, say we'll buy it at X, but that is contingent upon commissioners for approving a budget for the 2014, 15 fiscal year that authorizes that expenditure. So, so it's kind of a two-step process. First of all, we try to get this contract an enforceable agreement to buy the property. Then, the commissioners have to, in the budget process, approve the expenditure of that money. And if, if the contract is contingent upon that approval and the commissioners' court does not approve spending money in the budget for that property, the contract goes away. It becomes unenforceable. Now, that was the concept that I discussed with Pete before, and the good thing about that, I guess, is it gives us more time to think about this, more time to talk to the road and bridge department about how you're actually, what your plan is for fixing the roads, and how this piece of property actually fits in or is needed, or is not needed, in making that determination. I think Pete is concerned that this property could get stamped up. I mean, it's on the market, somebody else could buy it. I don't know whether, I don't know what the likelihood is, I have no idea. But Pete's concern is that we go ahead and secure the right to buy it, and it'd be there first when we're making discussions during the budget discussion. Now, I, like I said, I'm not thoroughly convinced that this property is the proper investment for the road and bridge firm. And I'm gonna be talking to Mike, Pete, and everybody about that in the coming, you know, few weeks. But I do think that it might do well to go ahead and see if we can negotiate a price on this place, have authority to place it under the contract, and have it in play and a possibility when we're discussing the road and bridge budget. Because if we don't, it won't even be, you know, a prospect, or it might not be a prospect, it could go off the market. I don't know. But I think that's the rationale that Pete and Jerry were thinking about going ahead with the contract now, rather than waiting for the budget to be discussed and the budget approved. Judge, summarize that correctly, Pete.
Why don't you make it contingent on not paying more than a professional appraisal will give you on the thing, rather than trying to guess at what it's worth?
Good idea. Good idea. There's another question. Awesome. Yes, ma'am.
Item number 13, discuss, approve, or disapprove. I missed the last meeting, I apologize, but I have heard numerous reasons why it is inappropriate at this time, it is premature at this time, unless I missed something at the last meeting. How long have we been looking at purchasing more property for the road and bridge? How long have we been discussing this? Because I've only missed one meeting. And so, I'm wondering, again, two months ago, the mayor of Brungy came here and said, "No one's using this area and these facilities, can we put our fire trucks there?" I know that there are county properties that are not being utilized. I know that there are other places and ways to spend this money. I know you just stated that the county attorney said you needed to get this on the agenda. I think it should be on the agenda for discussion purposes, to start looking at it, to begin thinking and evaluating what's necessary. I don't think a decision is needed right now. I think we need to table this, or disapprove it for right now, and begin the research that needed to be done in the first place, and make us all aware as citizens what's going on, and what's needed and what's necessary. I just respectfully ask that you not take the time today to go into executive session, but to note it was done, and note that there's just much discussion and research needed before we proceed with this contract. Thank you.
Judge, my thoughts are this, why don't you develop a team of concerned citizens to go check this out, and come, and evaluate, and come back and give you a, a report?
Well, I thought about, uh, the appraisal. I guess it, this thing's got two different issues. One is the need for the property and the appropriateness of, of the acquisition of this property for the overall plan for the county road and bridge farm. Okay? That's number one. And number two is whether or not the property is priced at an appropriate price. Okay? You know, even if the property, acquisition of property is a good idea for the road and bridge department, it's something we need to do, is it priced correctly? And if, is, or is it so overpriced that it overwhelms the, you know, the, the use we'll get out of the property? I, I don't know. Take a look at it, if it's underpriced, we're gonna buy it, sell all four acres of it, and make money. You know, who knows?
Isn't that what a team could do, is check it out, see what it's worth?
Well, you have to have, either that or hire a professional appraiser to do this. You know, just get, get an appraiser to go out there and look at it and say, "Here's how much it's worth." As far as determining what its value of road and bridge firm is, is something else. But look...
But you would have to have a burnist made, wouldn't you?
Well, you can get him to pray, the way, you know, we could probably make it, we could certainly make it part of the contract, if, if the seller is willing, you know, to say it has to meet certain praise values.
$10,000?
Professional appraiser?
No, $2,000 per year.
My question is, Mike referenced needing somewhere for the multitude of equipment he has now and anticipates getting within the next budget. So, does that mean every evening, every piece of equipment's gonna come back to the yard?
No.
Exactly. So, why do we need that big yard?
I don't know. It's not, thank you. It's like, you have to go back in history, the people voted for the unit system, and they did it simply because they wanted change. They wanted something done with their roads. Whether it has worked, I can honestly say it probably has not worked, it has not been implemented properly. But the people were in a dire need of saying, "You know what? Every time it came around, these guys wanted new equipment, new equipment." We saw new dump trucks, new rollers, new road graders, and the roads stayed the same. "My, my neighbor died, he was ninety-seven years old, the roads are the same. We've been here twenty-five years, the roads are the same. We implemented the unit system, the roads are the same." We, we don't see any change. This is exactly what we were trying to prevent when we, someone came up with the novel idea that's been implemented in Guadalepe County and, and Bee County, the unit system, where they actually were putting more money and work into the road, and not so much into the equipment and the necessities, that's what the people were hoping. But in this county, for some reason, nothing can be implemented in the proper manner. And, and the citizens are the ones who are ending up with, with bearing the brunt of this. We're the ones trying to get up and down our road. I mean, we've had situations where we pulled our neighbor out with the tractor, we, we run, you know, spun off in the ditch. Just talked to a woman the other day, and this is prior Eagle Ford Shell, back in the day when our budget, our entire budget for the road and bridge prior Eagle Ford Shell was $1 million. That was the entire budget for the road and bridge. We had $1 million to work off of. So, I mean, every time we've come to these meetings for six years, the consistent, the consistent complaint from people, you have the courthouse come up, you have this annex building come up, it was gonna be $3.2 million, it ended up being over $6 million. The roads are always something that gets pushed aside, constantly, day in and day out. And when we actually pleaded for a road engineer, I heard people stand up in here and say, "Thank you, thank you for finally doing something for the fifty percent of the people that live on the rural county roads." And we got the road engineer, and unfortunately, he got shoved right into working on SB 1747, and that's all he's done, was work on SB 1747, which is a document that if it is implemented, it's $44 million. I don't think that money's gonna come through. In fact, the engineer ends up getting $5 million worth of that if it were to ever go through. And we get that kind of money. I don't think we'll ever see that kind of money. We would just like a plan, we would just like to be something, see something done, and not the same old thing happening over and over again.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright. We need to do something on this.
Sorry, Carol, that was my three minutes that I signed up for.
James, you wanna, what do you wanna do? Wait until we get further into the budget process, or you all wanna go far enough to do that?
Carol, I think, I think you need, we need to talk to the owner right now and see if we have a chance to buy it, so we can proceed in the process. I think you can, you need to give that...
Pete, yeah.
I think we need to help. Therefore, I make a motion that we give Judge Butler authority to meet with the owner and discuss and see if this can be bought for a price.
With the assistance of?
With the assistance of Peter James or myself.
Maybe you're gonna have to speak up this week.
Nobody can be muffled.
You have to speak real closely, Mike.
Judge, Mr. Mizeley.
Judge, I have to make a call.
I haven't, I haven't manned up forever.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just have to jump up. Um, maybe he does need some more room for storage, but I know of one place, it's on nine acres, it's got a house and a big shed, 'cause I got, he used to do welding there, and a friend of mine was looking at buying, $485,000, that's a lot less than a million, and it's nine acres, and it's just off of 181.
Okay.
So, there are other places that are more reasonable, and there's room for storage. It's got a huge shed, and it used to be like a welding shop or something.
Alright.
And, and, and it's on nine acres, from what I understand, just right there before you take that road that goes back way into Kennedy. So, there are other properties that aren't, that can be used.
Alright. Pete, what is your...
Item number 13, my motion is that we approve item 13 as written.
I'll second it.
Does that require a $10,000 deposit for a renovation?
No. This is something that's gonna be basically what it is. It's gonna be negotiated, it may not even go through, but it's gonna be the right to negotiate.
There's no type of county funds that needs to be...
No, we will be coming back each time to Commissioners Court before anything else is made, that there's gonna be hidden or behind a curtain or anything like that.
Let me see if I understand, the, the motion is that I be given authority to commence negotiations with the owner of this particular property, and report back to the commissioners what I am able to negotiate?
It's gonna be with either me or Pete, so there'll be two of us actually doing it.
Alright. So, whatever members of the team, we're instructed to go negotiate this, the pricing on this, and then report back to the commissioners to see if the commissioners want to approve the contract?
Yes, hearing court, it'll be done in public.
Okay. And that's been seconded, it's not an authorization to actually enter into the contract?
Number two.
Okay.
Just to talk.
That's fine. All in favor?
All in. You all ready to talk about it?
Okay. And your vote, your...
Yep, I just said as long as you're going out there to talk about it, not to buy it yet.
Okay, that's what I understand.
My apologies, I'm, I'm probably misunderstanding this completely, but, but item 13 says to approve, disapprove a contract.
Yeah, but that's...
So, it's like you're, by saying yay, you are approving a contract to be drawn and...
No, and the resolution, or what we just voted on was different than 13. It was a authorization, simply negotiate a price on the property.
He said as written. As written, he, he didn't say as written. He said, number 13, as written.
Well, as I understand what we voted on, if we may have to go back, as I understand what we voted on, and I restated with Pete and with James, was that I was giving, given authority along with Pete and James to negotiate a price with the owner of this property and to report back to the commissioners, no authority to contract for the property. Is that what I understand? Is that your motion, Pete?
That's not what the profit, that's not what 13 says.
I, I agree with her, I think it has to be put on the agenda as written, since several times we've, we've gone over this.
Well, we're restricting, we're modifying it, I mean, modifying it to be more in line with what people in the audience have indicated they wanted, which they didn't want to approve the contract at this point in time. And we're not asking for authority, we're deleting from this agenda item the authority to actually approve the contract.
Okay. And with that, it was just written for me, one says to approve the contract, and the other says to negotiate a contract. So, thank you for clearing that up for me.
Pete, do you wanna pull back the original motion and make that the modification without the full contract, discussing the contract?
Well, we don't have a turn here till this morning.
Well, we, the folks, we've sat, we've sat here and I've sat here many, many years.
Judge, go ahead.
Excuse me?
I'm a municipal law expert, or governmental law expert, never before been.
And we've, we've modified, we've modified a lot of, a lot of agenda items we have, I've sat here, I can't remember which one, but we've modified...
You can rescind that motion.
A lot of agenda items. And I, I just see that, yeah, we can rescind it, but I'm talking about the modification of this right here. I know that there's gonna be discrepancy about we modified it and everything, but look back and, I don't know when it's, when it's okay to someone else, or it's okay to someone else. It's okay, nobody really complains about us modifying an agenda item, but we're going to, we're gonna modify this one today, because we have modified other ones, and there hasn't been complaints with other ones, so, just because it's, somebody likes it the last time, or doesn't like it, you know, and then you're not okay with it now, and you're complaining about it now, but you didn't about the last time, we're gonna modify this one, just like we have in the past.
Okay. Well, let's just say that. And James, I'm only here to report the action, but there was a vote already which we can't rescind.
The vote that we took was on the motion I stated, which was not, did not accrue authority to, to make the contract.
We brought, we voted before in Commissioners Court, and we pulled the votes back out, and then we voted on, on this number, I can't remember the exact year, the exact date, the exact Commissioners Court meeting, but we have done this before in the past, too, where we vote for something, and then we bring it back, and then we re-vote on it on the same day, the same Commissioners Court meeting and everything. I, do I know the exact thing? No, I don't, I apologize for that, but we have done this before.
But you need to rescind, I think what Carol's trying to say is, y'all voted on as written, is what Pete said.
Yes.
And then Hanson stood up and said, "But..."
Yes, I understand.
So, y'all need to rescind that vote, and then re-vote on his, right? I'm only here to record the action.
Before the vote was taken, I asked Pete if his motion was, and restated what I thought his motion was, and it did not include authority to contract. Now, that's what we all agreed was the motion when we voted, and that's what I think we voted on, that's how I would like me to report in a minute.
Correct.
He made a motion, and I asked him if his motion was, and I gave the modified version of it, he said yes. So, that's why I think the motion needs to, that was proved.
Yes, and you're, you're correct about that, Judge.
Item 14, permit, discuss, approve, disapprove, suing the company's vehicle destroyed, damaged the bridge on County Road 277. I've authored that, there was a vehicle, a crane apparently, that went over a, one of our county bridges, and literally destroyed it. It's no longer usable, I would like to bring suit against the company that destroyed the bridge, and we need to have authority to do something. We've discussed it.
We've discussed it. I'll make the motion to approve item number 14 as presented.
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll direct the county attorney to do so. Discuss, approve, disapprove legislative consultant contract with Steve Holshouser. We've discussed this before, Mr. Holshouser is the legislative consultant, in other words, lobbyist, that has served along with, has served us on DeWitt County and three others, I believe, the last couple of years. I consulted, I don't have much to do with Steve, but I've consulted with the county judge of DeWitt County, he says he's really been instrumental in getting 1747 passed, and continued, the thing about 1747, that's a one-shot pony. You know, that, that was money granted to specific counties in the state, used on county road construction, and it is a small percentage of the amount of money. It'll be required to repair your roads, and your roads, and all that. It's, it's a one-year deal. And we're gonna have to be back there and pro the legislature every single year that they meet, for who knows how long, trying to get them to put some more money back. Where are the money's coming from? Which is down here, you know, they're, they're flush with cash up in Austin, and they're quite willing to spend it in places other than where the money came from, which is down here. And we're gonna try to get a change in that direction. 1747 is a very small step in getting that done. So, Austin being the way it is, and working the way it does, you have to have a legislative consultant with some experience and things like that, to get any of that up there. You have to have auditors. So, that's what the vote, yes, sir?
What is Mr. Holshouser, Pete?
Do you recall what we're paying him is a...
$15,000 a year.
How much?
No.
$1,000 per month? That's our share of what he gets from the contract.
I think there's a letter in here that states something. I don't think all five have agreed. The way I read this in here from Bill Fowler says...
Yeah, I think maybe down to three.
That it would be 1,500 a month, because there are only three participating, and that if he gets eldest to participate, it would come back down.
Can you make the contract contingent upon a report of some form or fashion?
We, we did that last time, he was gonna report to you.
He did. He did go to report. And Fowler gave me a report, and we had that discussed, I believe, at the regular report meeting after we received it, and everybody seemed satisfied.
We have a current bill in this cycle to reimburse DeWitt County for the month of July, and our portion has $1,000.
Okay.
All right, the way I... I think the email has stated July 30th, it says that, uh, there could be, you should budget no more than 2,500 per month for the 15-month term of the contract, if there are only three counties involved. If we can get the original coalition back together, the month expenditure will be 1,500 for each of the five counties.
Total of $7,500.
Total of $7,500. For all counties, good.
Judge, I think there should be some sort of a performance provision on the thing other than a report back. You can spend a lot of money with somebody, walk lighting and dining with people in Austin, and get no effective result out of it. I don't know how you put a measurable deal on it, but there should be something.
It is difficult, how do you measure performance, you know? Nobody knows exactly which lever pole that the legislature makes them do what they do. Nobody knows that. All you can know is, if your guy's up there and things do get accomplished in legislature, we're in your favor since it's 1747, you know, he was up there pushing for it, so you have to say, "Well, he contributed to that effort." I'm certain he wasn't the only one that bent the legislature's ear, but, you know, he contributed to that effort. And let's...
I, I do know that we can't be there every day by TSM, or some of his staff there every day. And Shelby and I are going to some legislative session, we're going to one in Austin this month, I'm going to one in October, to Vandere in October, I'm gonna talk to legislators there when I'm there, about what I think's important, and, but he would be there in Austin every day, we have some of his staff every day, but we, we cannot be there. And I know we wouldn't have got this 1747 if we hadn't had some help from someone there every day.
Can you say, does anyone have information, how long we've been in the white team? I know we've probably used them for two years, because I've been to Austin and met with them myself. I know we've used them in the last two cycles, or two years?
He was hired last year with 1747.
Last year, I believe, was the first year we did that.
Last year, first year?
Yes, he was hired last year with the coalition.
This, this will be our second year. Of course, I, it's, it's not just question of the time he spends, or the fact that he's up there on assignment, whatever connections he has, he'll... Somebody can go up there to Austin, and if they can't get to see the right people, it's a waste of time. And, so you have to handle that. And these guys, the more effective they become, the more money they charge. That's the truth. Uh, that, you know, you can get cut-rate lobbyists up there, I mean, as we, it hurts the way it's cheaper than this, but he might not be of much service to us. So, this guy, I would say, according to Fowler, he's approved upon the expected, uh, was instrumental in helping get 1747 passed, and Fowler believes could be instrumental in getting future help from the legislature we have. We can judge him at the end of the next legislative session, see what he does. If he doesn't get anything done, if nothing comes out of the legislature this next session, at the next budget meeting, I'd say, maybe he's not a good investor. But, that's...
I'm not the lead to approve, though.
Alright.
Let's make a deal on contracts, people.
Second, all in favor? And I think that when you're talking about the gauging his performance, that'll probably be on what legislature does next time. You know, I hate to give a guy over too much credit, but, you know, something good, because I'm legislature, we'll, we'll attribute it to him in some way.
Could I speak before we leave roads?
Uh, I think, Ms. Thompson, we've already left the roads for now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, need funds, and I have a suggestion of how we might, or load, do not go down.
Great, let's talk about it, if you wanna meet with me afterward, afterward, I sense it's not an idea, that's a great idea. Any ideas on how to get money from the government, we'll have to listen to you. Now, we have, Brenda, I'm sick, she's gonna tell us what the calculated effective and rollback tax rates are for the next tax year. Here, Miss Johnson?
Alright, this here to report, the tax rates have been calculated for the 14 fiscal, 1450 fiscal year. The effective rate calculated, total county rate, is 17.0718 cents. The rollback rate is calculated is 19.2612 cents, for $100 of value. I don't know if there's any questions?
And the total certified value tax... And the total certified value, taxable value of the...
Was ten, the total certified taxable value is ten billion, seven hundred twenty-two million, four hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Okay. Now, these are the amounts that are by statute required to calculate and disclose.
Yes, sir, they're required by statute, yes, sir.
And you're making the disclosure to the governing body and to the vote.
Yes, sir, and then it's the reports discretion at what rate to propose and adopt and support, just reporting the rates, okay?
Just out of curiosity, what was it before the oil bill?
Oh, it was a year, right?
Well, no, before the oil bill, permit, I think I looked at two thousand and eight, it was like five hundred million dollars was the total prized value in property. And the tax rate was something fifty cents, you know? And since that time, the prized value's been going up primarily mineral interest. You know, the, the vast maturity of this extra nine and a half billion or ten billion dollars worth of property is the appraisal's made on producing mineral interest. I can't remember the percentage, but it's, it's a bunch. And so most of that tax is being paid by the oil and gas company operators and the royalty owners.
Is it seven, is it seven billion then? Didn't seven, like seven billion of it now, this year?
So, I'd say it'd be nineteen million?
Now, thirteen, our certified values were six point six billion, uh, which minerals was five point four eight billion. This year it's ten point seven billion of minerals, it's eight point nine billion.
There you go. All right, thank you very much. It's adjusted. By way of full disclosure, the commissioners, or actually the county judge is declared to be by statute the budget officer of the county. I'm currently working on a proposed budget for the next year. When we get that budget figured out, we will determine a proposed tax rate for the year. And those will all be discussed at public meetings that we'll have here in the commissioners' court. And it will all be publicly discussed and sure discussed at length. And then we will vote on, the commissioners will vote on a proposed tax rate. Well, and we have to know what the budget is to know what tax rate we need to cover the budget. And so when we get the budget calculated, we'll set a tax rate, and then that will all be publicly disclosed. If we exceed the amount of the, what's called the rollback rate, the citizens of the county have the right to petition for a rollback petition to take the rates back down to the rollback rate. And so, all of that, we're gonna be discussing at length. And anyone who wants to come and talk to me about it after we get that proposed budget submitted, feel free to come discuss it with me, we can discuss this. All right? Now, let's go to discuss, approve, disapprove an amendment to the oil and gas treaty dated December one nineteen fifty-seven. The authority inspiration amendment is to modify the standard vertical pooling agreement to allow acreage to be included in a unit for a horizontal well. The lease includes four point three three acres in the proposed unit. The property was purchased in trust, or in a trust through the sheriff's deed dated November twenty two thousand nine, and reported in volume nine eleven, page four ninety-five in the D. Rogers Parnes County, Texas. It was authored by Richard Butler and Sally Lucas. Is Sally Lucas here? Come up, Sally. Perhaps you can tell, I don't know about this, but perhaps you can tell us what's going on.
Okay, there's a twenty-six acre Stellikin lease, that was nineteen fifty-seven. It's in a producing unit, the cruise unit. Um, it's been producing since the late fifties. Out of that, y'all purchased a four point three three acre tract, which I have a flat of it. We have drilled, Black Brush Oil and Gas has drilled the Yanta et al. well. We formed the unit prior to drilling the well, that did not include this acreage. They drilled a really good well, they wanna drill several more wells, and they wanna expand the unit so that they can draw, uh, drill longer laterals. So, we're adding in your tract and the rest of the Stellikin lease, and then the cruise lease, which is twenty-seven point five acres, and an additional fourteen acres of the Yanta lease.
Okay. And have you prepared a proposed amendment?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I, I gave it to y'all, but here it is again.
Okay.
And all it does is amend the pooling language in the original well and basements, which is the original rules. And this is the proposed unit. Your tract, if you look at number fours, the Stellikin lease, your tract is this four point three three acres off the east side. Right now, it's... But there is one producing well in there right now. I need, I want to drill several more.
And you're representing Black Brush, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The operator?
Yes.
Thank you, Sally. With Black Brush, he wanted to negotiate the terms of the amendment. I haven't looked at it, I just know that normally when companies come to my clients in my private practice asking for amendment to oil and gas, I'm looking at the terms that are in existence and looking at what they're closing and usually get some alteration with the rules.
No, sir, they want to add, it's a four point three three acre tract, it's already held by production, and it's been held since the fifties and will continue to hold for years to come. It's an old overswell, there may be two wells out there. And like I say, they've already formed the unit without that lease in there, but they just want to include y'all. In other words, it's revenue to the county and the other. A four acre tract of land...
They're not gonna negotiate over the terms provided under the amendment for oil and gas plan?
No, sir.
All right, commissioners, and discussion?
This has been in production since the lease was recorded nineteen fifty-seven. It's been in production all this time?
Since the late fifties, I believe. The well was drilled in even fifty-nine or sixty, it was a five-year lease for gas and gas.
It retrieved, well?
Pardon?
It retrieved, uh, gas.
It's the cruise oil unit. It was initially the Shell unit and then Carter and Parsley. It's been changed hands over and over, but yes, it has been producing consistently.
So, we've been getting a check for it from this time?
I am assuming that y'all have, if you let Black Brush know that y'all purchased the minerals from Duckies, and I don't know if you have or not, if it was sent to Black Brush. I mean, I, I will obviously get this information to them. You sold the surface to Mr. O'Gilla in, I don't know, two thousand and eleven, I believe, but you retained the minerals. And so, yes, if y'all could not notify Black Brush, then that interest may be in suspense. I don't know if it's being paid or not.
Can you check that for us?
I can check that, yes.
I guess what I'd like to do for, take any action on this amendment is we're going to verify that we have been being paid, and if we haven't been, that we will be paid for royalty over from the time that we acquired the property.
You purchased it in two thousand nine. If Black Brush is a producer, we are not receiving revenues for it.
We're not receiving any, good. How long has Black Brush held the lease?
Oh, since two thousand and five, I believe.
Okay, so, all right, let's check into that before we, uh, before we approve the amendment. Can you get us some information?
Yes, I will get a copy of the instrument where you purchased it and give it to Black Brush. Obviously, Black Brush, they didn't go to courthouse every week to find out, so they've just gotta be notified, which I'll make sure that's done, and I'll find out if the money's been in suspense, what the deal is, and what will be done.
And if y'all also know, and then we'll put this on the next agenda, which we just a couple of weeks from now, so we get a pass interest, we have time, bro?
Well, I mean, they wanna go ahead and form the unit. They have plans to drill a well in during their future. They've got a rig here, and my understanding is that they're gonna be drilling it, like, at the end of this month or the first part of September. And they need to get that unit reformed, if they're gonna do it, if they're not gonna do it, then they're not gonna do it. I can tell a point.
I'll ask Walker, what do you think?
I mean, you have record title in that acreage, so it needs to be switched over, and I'll notify Black Brush of that.
Let's put that off for a minute, we'll come back to this before we...
Okay. Can I go outside, I can go pull the payday, I can call Black Brush, find where the well...
Why don't you do that, come back to us when everybody's ready.
I will do that.
Uh, number eighteen, presentation, petition by concerned citizens requesting a complete full audit of all Corns County funds, I'm talking about Tracy Schindel, Charlene and Darrell White.
Now, put this on there for these people to come up and explain everything to us.
First, I would like to thank Commissioner Tracy Schindel for placing this on the agenda for us. Thank you, Tracy. I'm here before you as a retired employee, concerned citizen, and taxpayer of Corns County, to present to you a petition signed by many concerned citizens across the county, asking for a complete, full audit of all county funds, and insist on responsible accountability of our tax dollars. Since you receive reports each month from both the county auditor and treasurer, you too should be aware and in concern of the discrepancy and irresponsibility of our tax dollars. The newspaper reported there was a five thousand dollar difference in the previous full audit for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve budget year. There should not be one penny unaccounted for. It is taxpayers' money, not anyone's personal money, and I feel sure if it were your personal fund, you too would want every penny accounted for. It seems strange to me that nothing was ever acknowledged to the public until after we, as concerned taxpayers, began circulating this petition, asking for a complete, full audit of all county funds. We realize this will cost us, as taxpayers, to have a complete audit, but we believe now is the time to have this audit done of all county funds and clear the air once and for all. If there's nothing to hide, then everyone should be in favor of this full audit. In reading the July twenty-second, two thousand fourteen issue of our local newspaper, Judge Butler, you stated that it was unclear if this audit was needed. I don't know how much clearer it needs to be when the reports you all currently have been receiving each month from the county auditor and county treasurer continue to be out of balance each month for our current budget year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, of some of which the reports I have copied. How much clearer does it need to be? The local government code has created a checking balance system through both the county treasurer and auditor. When properly carried out, these discrepancies should never occur. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak and present to you this petition, and we hope you approve this request, signed by many concerned citizens. My husband now will read the title of the petition to you.
Okay. This is a petition for a full audit of Corns County finances by an expert public accountant in accordance with Local Government Code one one five point oh three one. And it says, "We, being the concerned citizens of Corns County, address to Corns County Commissioners Court regarding our county finances. Corns County has more monies available, and our deposits during the past year have been reported to be as high as six to four million dollars. Unfortunately, the monthly reports of the county auditor and county treasurer reflect different balances and discrepancies which range from thousands to millions of dollars in the month of October, November, and December of two thousand thirteen. The financial reports continue to be out of balance for this year as well. On May the thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, the county auditor reported indicated a balance of thirty-eight million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, three hundred, six, thirty-eight million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents as of April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. There was no report from the treasurer, although she was present at the meeting. As citizens, these differences and discrepancy are not acceptable, and we believe this to be a lack of financial responsibility of our monies. Therefore, we are requesting that Commissioners Court pass a resolution as defined in section one one five point oh three one of the Local Government Code, which specifically states that negligence in records and reports of failure to make reports will constitute necessity for a full audit of all Corns County finances by an expert public accountant neither chosen nor recommended by the county auditor, auditor, or treasurer. The following citizens request that this act be taken seriously as soon as possible." And we have over four hundred and fifty signatures, and we present to you, Judge Butler, the original copies of this petition for safekeeping, and ask for your signature showing your acceptance.
I think that probably best given in the county clerk's office, or I, I don't have a filing or anything here. We'll note down the record that we have received and accepted the petition, and I'm gonna ask that the county clerk keep it in custody of the clerk's office.
But would you sign the, that you accepted it? That's all, that's all we're asking.
Things have gotten lost in the past, and we don't want, want them to get lost again.
I'm telling you, I'm accepting it. Judge reporting it.
And is that, is a copy of the Local Government Code too, there? Is that the copy of?
And then I'll speak to you, concerns.
Well, there are two, one for your record and one for ours. We need to sign it too.
You want to sign them?
We need to sign both of them.
I don't want to, I want to sign a single document, a little accompanying the petition that's attached to that petition that you're filing, okay?
Okay.
This one's not attached to anything. You can get a certified county clerk.
Okay, that's fine.
All right?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your presentation, petition, and I will address your concerns best I can. Since I took office in March, uh, I've noted that the county financial records seem to have discrepancies. We've had an auditor, there's been an auditor, an independent auditor, employed to audit, as they do annually, the county's financial records, and to report on them. This year, and the audit is actually required to be completed by March thirty-first. This year, and the audit is actually required to be completed by March thirty-first. Uh, it was not completed by March thirty-first, and we started getting calls from the auditor who performed the audit saying that she was unable to get through discrepancies in the financial records, discrepancies between records of what's been deposited in the bank and records of what the county treasurer has entered into the financial records of the county. I talked to the auditor several times and asked what information she needed. She said she'd inform the treasurer of that information. I'd asked Ms. Malone, uh, at least two different meetings and then some private meetings as well. Please try to get to the bottom of this, find where the problem is and get this resolved. And in spite of repeated assurances that to this date that it's not happening, uh, it is a great concern to me. I don't know what the problem is. I don't know exactly precisely where the fault lies. You guys kind of lay at the doorstep of this petition, both the auditor and the treasurer. I don't know, I don't know about that. I, you know, I'm not, I'm not making that judgment. I will tell you this, that the county is already taking steps to get to the bottom of what the problem is. Uh, as I said, we have an audit underway now. That, if it's completed, if we say, "Give us the audit report right now," it's going to have some negative treatment, and that's going to have an adverse effect on the county's bond rating, on the county's ability to sell bonds, the interest rate recharge, things of that nature. I would like for that not to happen. And I would like to see if we can repair the financial records to where there is no discrepancy. If it cannot be, say, if there's money missing or something like that, well, then clearly we have to go a couple of steps further. And I know that's what you're trying to get done and what you want done. I would ask for your patience. We're currently engaged in about six weeks of very intensive activity trying to prepare our budget for next year. These discrepancies in the amount of money that the financial records we've been talking about should not, you're right, there shouldn't be a nickel difference in those records. They should be straight down the line. The auditors require, in order to report a clean audit, that there be no more than, say, five to ten thousand dollars difference, which they consider to be immaterial. I understand that's not gonna be satisfactory as far as your concern. That's not as far as I am either, but it at least will allow us to submit a clean audit report and comply with the SEC regs regarding sales of our securities, our bonds. Uh, what I would like to do is to continue with our current investigation that we have going, and I can tell you that it's expanded beyond simply that audit, and see what turns up. I think you'll be satisfied to see what steps are being taken to investigate this discrepancy and what issues might lie underneath. Now, but I don't want to, at this time, hire an additional auditor until we see what our investigation turns up. I don't want to occupy the auditor's office with this issue for another six weeks. Ms. Castbrick is working hard with me to get the budget put together, and I need to get that done. If you want to freeze this county's budgetary process, if you want us to be frozen and not be able to function as a county, then don't give us that six weeks. Insist on immediate action and, uh, and see what happens.
Who is investigating it?
I'm sorry?
Who is investigating it?
I can't tell you that right now. It's subject to attorney-client privilege. The county has employed an attorney, and, uh, and the county's attorney is working on that right now. Now, your, your petition stands. Uh, when we get around to the budget process, if we haven't gotten satisfactory answers by that time, we will, I will see to it that you request a line item or a budget item in there for the preparation of the audit that you're calling for. I'm not telling you, "Oh, we're not gonna do that. Just trust us, let us do this investigation separate." I'm telling you that it may not be required to get what you're trying to get to. It may not be required that we spend... How much money do you estimate that audit costs?
I really don't know. Something between probably fifty to a hundred and fifty, maybe, thousands.
Substantial sum of money.
Yes, sir, but it's worth it for taxpayers to know, you know, if it was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars off, to find a million dollars, maybe, down the road, it's worth it as taxpayers' money.
It, it's worth it.
And then it's known to this county to sweep things under the carpet, and, and I don't want this to be swept under the carpet. Point blank, in taxpayers' money you're dealing with, they don't want it to be swept in the carpet. So what if it cost a hundred and fifty and you found a million dollars?
That's chicken change.
I mean, you're spending a million in something for property.
Yes, ma'am. You're correct that the counties, voters, and taxpayers need to be given assurance that their financial records are being maintained correctly, that no one is making off with any money. And that's exactly what we're trying to do right now. What I'm asking the petitioners to do is to wait a brief period while we follow the course that we're currently on with our attorney, to see if we get what the information we need that way. If we know we're going to have to employ an auditor to examine the records, I understand, and there's no hesitation to do that. Nobody's trying to sweep anything under the rug. I don't have any political alliances in this county. I didn't have to farm any to get into office, and I'm not gonna run again, so I don't care. All right? I just want to make sure that the office, that the financial records are correct and that no one is making off with any money, which I assume is what you want, ma'am.
No, we're not, we're not saying, we're not after anyone's job. We want financial responsibility of our tax dollars, which the taxpayers deserve.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, it was just reported, we have, what is our, uh, value now? Billions of dollars?
Ten billion.
Ten and a half billion.
Okay, well, we won't, I mean, this is the prime time, and I can't see the other time being the prime time to have a complete, full audit. I don't mean of just the auditor and treasurer's office. I mean the JP's office. I mean a full, complete audit. Uh, how long has it been since the county auditor has gone in and done an audit of the JP book?
We do do them. We do them.
We do an audit every time they turn any money.
You go into their books and you audit that this receipt belongs to this money?
We audit that the receipts match the reports and the monies are there that are being turned in. We verify that before it goes to the county treasurer's office for receiving and depositing.
And you get signed off with the JP's? Well, I was told by one JP that it hadn't been audited for a long time. So, I mean, there's just different, different ones.
I'd like to know, because I'm, I'm an employee in the auditor's office, and I'm also a taxpayer. And you know what? You're right, a lot of things have happened for years. But there's no need of pointing figures, like Judge Butler says.
Nobody's pointing.
Nobody's pointing fingers, no.
It feels like it, because I'm an employee and I'm a taxpayer, too. And I don't appreciate when somebody's trying to tell you, "We're working on it." They're working on it.
Yep, they've been working on it for five years.
And then the JP's also, there's some JP's here. I mean, who is the JP that is saying that?
Well, you haven't, but the, there are some people have. I mean, the, the budgets, the, the books have been out of balance for five or six years, Judge.
I can't speak to that.
I know you can't.
For six years. Right, I can tell you that.
And you're only talking about the spot audit from last year. The books continue to be, I've got copies of the reports. One month, it was two million dollars between the treasurer and auditor's office. One, one month, it was two hundred and fifty thousand. What do you think that looks like to taxpayers and concerned citizens? It looks like the offices aren't working together. There should not be one penny difference.
Do we not? We do, we work with her.
Well, and on my reports, I report everything that my signatures required on and any bank account that I have to open, and that's what I report. I don't think Lwana reports in her stuff the juvenile department's monies.
I don't care what you report on. You come out with one balance, and those balances should be the same reconciled to your bank statement. There should not be, just like they said, five thousand dollar difference? I mean, come on, we're, you know.
But you reported on your petition that at one time there was sixty-four million dollars that was on the county books. I have copies of all my reports in October through May.
I got these reports from Pete Yar. I made copies, and that's why.
Is that my report or the auditor's report?
Both of them.
But my reports never said sixty-four million dollars.
Your reports, yes.
No.
Well, the auditor did them.
But mine isn't one of those.
I got those from Pete Yar that was given to him.
Yeah, I have copies of all, and most that we ever had at one time was in the month of January for fifty-two million. And the bank requires, wants us to keep seven million dollars in the bank. That was when Brenda had given me a twelve million dollar check to deposit to our account to wire out, because the bank doesn't want us to have so much money in. And then we wired it back in. So it looked like we had fifty-two million, and part of that was tax dollars on there.
For other entities.
For other entities, not ours. But once she was ready to disperse those funds, we moved that money back into her account. That's why it's, there's a fifty-two million on that particular month. In the month of, uh, May, when she's referring to the meeting that Lwana had given a report and I didn't give a report, if you look on those reports from my reports, you'll see that on the May eighteenth meeting... Sorry. The May thirteenth meeting, I gave my report to the judge's office to hand out to the commissioners, and he did not do that. They've got all put into one file, so when I walked up there to give my report, all four of them stood up there and said, "We don't have your report." And I said, "Well, I gave it to the judge's office." And that's when the black hole was summoned, and it had got put into the black hole. And what I think had happened, the reports that I had given to him were all, he thought were all his, so he didn't pass them out to the commissioners. So I did not give my report, but you can tell on April thirteenth, on May thirtieth, I gave my April report. So to say that I, A, have sixty-four million dollars in the bank at one time, it's not true, and to say I did not give my report in the month of April is not true.
Pete, do you have those, do you have your reports?
I have copies of all my reports.
That, that you gave?
And none of my reports were, all the commissioners signed off on, said we had sixty-four million dollars.
Okay, I have a copy of January thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen's.
Is that my report or the auditor's report?
Okay, I have a report here that is, this is the county treasurer. You have fifty-two million, six oh nine, three eighty-five, twelve.
Yes, and that's the one I was talking about, where we had moved so much of the money of the tax office's money to satisfy the bank. So we had to deposit it into our accounts, receive it into our system. In like the first couple of days of February, we moved that back into there. So that's what it says.
The auditor had sixty-four million, four hundred thousand, two hundred fourteen thirty, and you had fifty-two million, six oh nine, three eighty-five, twelve. Now, tell me that balance.
Okay, and that's, you don't need to get any...
Well, I mean, tell me.
But I agree with you, but I, but I know why. I know why I reported sixty-four million dollars, and I don't know why you...
Ms. Flashby, I'm Ms. Flashby. It's not productive for the rest of us here. You guys going over these numbers, we can't see it.
I'll be saying their own balance.
Hang on. First of all, number eighteen, the presentation of the petition is concluded. We go to number nineteen, which is, uh, "Discuss, Pro, Dispro, Upon Petition, Present to the Commissioners Court for a Complete Full Audit of All Corns County Funds, Monies." And this talks about Tracy, Charlene, and Darrell. I would request that we delay action, postpone action on the petition, pending the results of our current investigation and consultate the legitimate attorney about these matters. Uh, will I have this resolved one way or another in time, I believe, uh, to put into next year's budget? A request for an audit, as you say, a full audit of everyone in the whole county area. Everybody who collects money, they gotta be audited. Uh, if that's, it'll be available, and it'll be presented in time and put that into the budget, okay? But I'm just asking for everybody's forbearance while we pursue what we've got going to see if it produces results, okay? Then, if you feel like all the JP's offices, the sheriff's office, the road and bridge, the permit offices, and all those people need to be investigated or brought to... For how many years, I don't know. You have to have a limit to the number of years you audit. Uh, we can, the commissioners can vote on that if they want to do it.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief. All right? Thank you for your, for your initiative in getting this petition together. I would like to ask that you support the judge and put this off, or just hold on for a little bit. I believe the judge, an honorable man, he will put the, put an amount in the budget to ensure that a audit is completed, but I think he deserves that opportunity to finish the investigation he's already got underway. And I also agree with you that an audit should be done, but apparently he's got something working. And, you know, he's, he's got an attorney or some firm, and I would like to support the judge and you also can help him out and let it get... Because we can't freeze the government. You know, if we, if we pursue this, and certainly we can, you can do that, it could have some significant negative effects on the county and its operations, and we have to continue to operate.
So, well, his audit's big and complete. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That I can't ask. I'm just saying, I mean, does he have a date?
Do you have a date, Judge?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a date when you think your audit will be complete? The end of the year or what?
The, the audit that's being performed on the two thousand, the prior year's fiscal year. Have you heard back from the auditor on that? The last time I talked to her, she's still working through numbers. Uh, she wanted to be finished in March, April, May, but it's not been able to get. And she can finish it right now and report negatively. Uh, I don't think you really want that done. Uh, as a citizen of the county, we'd like to see if we can clean it up. But it may not be cleanable. It may not be. But we have another step going forward that I think will shed some light, and that should be, I think, the next month will be cleaned up. We'll know where we're going with that. Yes, ma'am.
When, when is the budget due to be finished, doing all of that?
The proposed budget, the proposed budget will be on file with the county clerk's office before the end of this month.
Before the end of this month.
Well, as the first of the hearings, tentative we're scheduling it after... Well, as the first of the hearings, tentative they were scheduling it after September 16th on the proposed budget and proposed tax rate. The second hearing on the tax rate will take place, I believe, September 22nd. And we'll air out all these things at that time. We'll have time to put this audit, you know, put budgeting for the audit into the budget. And I will say this, that if what we're doing uncovers a need, a specific need for that audit, you know, and it may well, uh, I would consider that even if it wasn't in the prior, even if it wasn't in the budget at the time it goes into effect, fiscal year October 1, that that would probably, if something gets reported to us that clearly shows we need to audit full county finances, I'm sure we could get an emergency budget movement to do that. If we received that report after October 1, it says, you know, there's something amiss here and we'll get that done. But I...
Are we going to see the actual finding where the problem is? Or are we gonna do a debit and a credit to correct the book like was done in the past?
I don't know what will be done.
That's what was done with $200 something thousand when the new auditor came in, they couldn't find it. Because I asked both auditor and treasurer and they said they debited and credited to correct the book.
The specifics you're talking about, I don't have any idea. I haven't, you know, this is historical and I haven't had any exposure to what you're talking about. So I can't tell. I think what we'll try to do is find if there's money missing, find where it can't went. If there's, uh, entries that just haven't been matched up, we'll try to get those matched up. Uh, you know, what's in the bank to the financial records. Do whatever we have to do, but I don't intend to simply whitewash it, no.
So you want to just take no action today and wait?
It's not possible to delay this. I'm not saying this is not...
Delay?
Not merited. I'm not saying it's not appropriate. I'm just saying that I would like to complete what we're working on now before we take action.
So we just table it.
No action. We don't want to table it or we'll have to come back and do it or we're...
Just no action.
We wait on your real...
Thanks for your support. That's huge. Give us something unexciting here.
No, trust me. This is very unexciting.
It's a sore throat when I get to spend the weekend on tractor and a lot of dust.
Next collections for the month of July. The, uh, the county MNO, month of July, $64,443,12 cents. Year to date, $9,626,5728 for a collection rate of 98.45%. The liquid collections for the county MNO, $2,074.65. Year to date, $57,884.90 for a collection rate of 29.75%. The county INS for the month of July, current $8,594.63. Year to date, $1,289,151.48 for a collection rate of 98.46%. Delinquent, uh, county INS collections for July, $2,530.05 for a collection rate of 22.12%. Roden Bridge, month to date, $14,655.13. Year to date, $2,197,427.02 for a collection rate of 98.46%. Delinquent Roden Bridge for July, $258.71. Year to date, $13,347.11 for a collection rate of 39.38%. Rural Fire, month of July, $7,103.86. Year to date, $1,061,789.17, collection rate of 98.45%. Delinquent Rural Fire for the month of July, $181.37. Year to date, $6,880.44 for a collection rate of 40.8%.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, item number 21, discuss action regarding June and July treasurer's report.
You have the June report in front of you as of 9 o'clock. The books were not closed until the month of July, so I was not able to complete my report. So I need that to be factored on the July 31st, uh, August 31st.
The books weren't closed? Why?
That's actually the department's job to answer that.
The books were not closed because we had July, June's books open until yesterday afternoon also because I was doing an audit on the outside investments. Plus some of the ending July checks were intermixed with some August checks and so they didn't get posted. So Michelle reopened the books this morning for July to post those checks.
And if we go to the... I know there's a lot of pages in front of us. On the page for the debt obligations, we did make the last payment in, uh, for the wheel rolling. On the current kind of debt obligations, we made a payment for, to Sandport South for the Roden Bridge rolling. That was made on, uh...
7/25.
Yes, actually I switched my July report, sorry. We did make that payment. We did pay that off. That was in my July report, sorry.
Isn't that one paid off?
Yeah, well, we paid it off in July, yes. You'll see it in the July debt obligations where that was paid.
Ms. Vaughn, in prior remarks you've brought to our attention some discrepancy.
It had to do with the outside investments on the, uh, whenever we get the interest rate, the companies that we invest with automatically just re, uh, invest those interest rates. And so what I've done in the March, oh, sorry, April and May interest rates, I receipted them into the same line item that they're actually expensed from, so zeroed them out, so it didn't show them on the report. So the auditor's office had to do the journal entries to correct that. And then I went in and reopened deposits for the month of June to put the June interest rate in there also. So that balance is the balance that was at the end of June.
So there were deposits being made from our investments that you had not entered into the...
I entered them incorrectly. I put them into the same line item, receipted them into the same line item that they're expensed out. So they zeroed themselves out, so it didn't show it.
Instead of receipting them into interest income, she was receipting them again to the certificates of deposits from outside investments line item. So they weren't showing as a revenue and they were showing in and out of the outside investments.
It's basically, it's a paper trail that we have to do.
Has that been corrected?
Yes.
Yes, I finished those corrections following my auditor's today.
Yes.
So the amounts reflected in this report for outside investments, that's all I'm speaking to now, is outside investments. They are the correct balances based on the statements from our outside investment companies.
As of June 30th.
But I'm just referring to the outside investments, not any other balances that are on here. I have any from those.
But none of those are balances reflected or are known by you?
Correct.
Ms. Vaughn, what you marked down on the kind of, we're going to enter summary sheet. You have balance May 2014, then you have receipts of 47706, 49799. Are those receipts of money that came into the treasurer's office, are those what were actually deposited in the bank?
Actually, the, you're referring to on, um...
This is the summary page.
Summary page. I took that information off of page eight on my report. So it's money that's received into the system and the monies dispersed are checks that are written.
But it's not, it's not necessarily the amount of money that has been deposited into the bank.
It could, well, it would be money deposited into the bank, yes. And some of the disbursements that we have include monies from the GEO fund that we get through, um, the ICE unit that we have. So we receive that money into, in deposit, direct deposit into the bank. And then we receive it into the system and then we write, we disperse a check for that. So we have...
I guess what I'm asking is, when you write receipts, you put 47706, 49799, that's money that you've received into your system, your county system?
Correct.
That does not necessarily reflect what you deposited into the bank?
Either directly or indirectly, yes, it does. It should match with the money that's...
How frequently do you make deposits?
Uh, depends on what we have.
Do you make deposits at least once every seven days?
Yes. Well, at least, if I'm here, if I'm not here, I don't. Just do at least, it does not do the deposits.
Okay. Are there months where there's only one deposit made a month?
No, no. We do payroll every other week, so there's deposits made to the payroll. There's direct deposits that are made also. So we have the new payroll.
Okay. You might have any other questions?
How does everything receivable in this system?
Every day when we get it in, yeah. We get notices from the bank. If it's like the GEO funds, we don't receive those in until Michelle writes the checks for those. But sometimes the monies that we show that we get and the billing that they get doesn't necessarily match. So she wait, I wait until she gives me those.
But did Julie receive them or Julie receivable?
Julie can receive also, yes.
Does she?
Yes, yes. Like the JP's bring the monies in. She's the one that receives the money in and then I'm the one that makes the deposits for them.
And you accept cash for it?
Yes.
And cash is not deposited every day?
Not necessarily, no.
So I guess by statute, there's so many days you have to turn them in, but...
Seven business days, yes.
But don't just hold cash for like 30 days or so?
No.
All right. We're gonna have a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
As presented?
I'll make the motion. Nobody did any kind of adjustments, all right?
I'll make that motion, item number 21.
Second. On favor?
Yes, sir. If you'll put the July report on the August 29th, I think is the last business day.
We'll bring the drawers up on the last August meeting.
Right. Unless you have a special one of these two months.
Thank you, ma'am. I didn't get the other report. Yeah, I didn't get my bill, sir.
Yeah, that's the original.
In this bill cycle, we'll turn to page three, the third and fourth entries. Uh, we have a payment in the amount of $2,277 for attorney services to the Chapman Firm, BLLC, for the Carnes County Phase 1B of the courthouse. And we also have a payment of $728,982.90 to Hale Mills Construction on the jail facility.
Hold on, I'm sorry, what?
Page three.
Oh, I am so sorry. Hold me, I know it's time.
The third and fourth entries.
Uh huh.
$2,277 are for legal services in conjunction with the Phase 1B of the courthouse.
Okay.
And $728,982.90 is the Hale Mills on the jail facility construction. Those are your out of ordinary expenditure this cycle, if you will, up on page nine. In the current budget, we have $35,000 of lateral road funds from the state to spend. We utilized 100% of those dollars in this bill cycle for road materials for different county roads. And a small amount is stockpiled at the Gillette yard. The total for this payment cycle is $1,113,561.77.
Any questions?
Motion to pay the bills as presented.
All right, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Mr. Yar, excuse me, sir.
Judge, is this on my report? Let's talk about the June on those different...
Yeah, it's on there. We need to get you some...
Yeah.
Right, good. Next items, the county clerk's office.
Oh, or the amendment June, my junior.
Those leaves a lot.
Oh, I'm sorry. But if my fifth July, we collect $65,382.
District clerk?
For the month of July, a grand total of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six. Less checks dispersed, three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Was a total for the month of July, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-six eighty-six. There was also a deposit of six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-six cents deposited into the, um, Karnes County District Clerk's office from the Attorney General case.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone here from the county attorney's office?
Stephanie, I have a report. Did you get a report? This was over here when I got here.
So, yeah, I've got it. Looks like, uh, month of July restitution of eighteen thousand nine oh eight eleven. Court costs of three thousand nine seventy ninety-seven. Or a total of twenty-two, eight seventy-nine oh eight. That's correct. I think those may be cumulative salaries. Yeah, they're cumulative, okay. So we didn't actually collect them, so it's not collected through those months. Okay. All right. What I'd say, that's a big amount. Uh, justices of peace. Judge.
Okay, uh, Justice Precinct One, uh, for the month of July, uh, had three hundred and sixty cases filed. Total revenue collected was forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one ninety. Total retained by the county was twenty-seven thousand, six seventy-five fifty-four. And total remitted to the state was fourteen thousand, five sixty-six thirty-six.
Thank you very much. The district one justice.
For Justice Court Precinct Two, new cases filed was a hundred and twenty-seven. Total revenue collected, twenty thousand, one sixty-three fifty. Total retained by the county, twelve thousand, two hundred and nine five twenty-nine. Remitted to the state, seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight twenty-one. Justice Court Precinct Three, new cases filed, two hundred and thirty-four. Total revenue collected, forty thousand, seven forty-eight seventy. Retained by the county, twenty-eight, seven oh two thirty-three. Remitted to the state, twelve thousand, forty-six thirty-seven. Precinct Four, new cases filed, one hundred and six. Total revenue collected, twenty-three thousand, five seventy-seven twenty-nine. Retained by the county, nineteen thousand, one fifty-eight seventy-eight. Remitted to the state, four thousand, four hundred and eighteen fifty-one.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
General, inform. Anyone here from juvenile program? Special project.
Uh, for the month of Ju- uh, July, on determination permits, I had sixty-two for a total of three thousand, five hundred. On subjects, I had twelve permits for a total of four thousand, six hundred and fifty.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sheriff, form, sure.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, I have the July twenty-fourteen monthly report of calls, citations and warnings. Accident for the month, we had fifty-one. Agencies assists, twenty. Alarms, twenty. Arrests are sixty-two. Assaults are eighteen. Criminal issues, two. Disturbances, eight. E M S, hundred and twenty-four. Fire, twenty-four. Funeral escorts, fifteen. Lose livestock, forty-five. Prisoner transports, eighty-three. Reckless drivers, twenty-nine. Requested station officers, a hundred and eighty-three. Road hazards, thirty-four. Suspicious activity, thirty-six. Thieves, we have thirty. Burglaries, seven. Traffic stops at seven hundred and forty-six. Warnings, three hundred and twenty-nine. Citations, three hundred and thirty-one. And warrant service, nineteen. And the second sheet is the inmate population on a daily basis of the different facilities.
Sheriff's, you're the traffic division, it says up and running, obviously, everybody in that.
Yes, sir. We're still waiting on the units to, you know, pretty equipment, but they're, they're.
The K P officers.
Yes, sir.
Rather swapping cars or something?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And y'all wrote seven hundred and forty-six traffic too.
That's traffic stops.
Traffic stops. Citations, two hundred and thirty-one.
One and then warnings, three twenty-nine.
But the traffic, uh, and the warnings, those are all traffic?
Yes, sir.
Is that not on that? Well, the J P's, at a, a total, all the J P's, I just added up, they had eight hundred and twenty-four new cases. I suppose those a lot, a lot, I didn't break it down, but they were like traffic.
It's a D C S.
D C S, two distillates, substantial amount of cases thought, for me, it is. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, everyone. Sheriff, I've had, uh, I've had citizens call and say, yeah, there's trucks speeding on this road. They're not even supposed to be trucks on this road. And I realize the sign and the stuff getting them up was not all possible, that's all not done yet. And then, uh, I talked to two of these people later and said, well, did anyone come out? They said, no, we never saw a sheriff's report. So, I don't know, I'm not telling you, I didn't write it down when or whatever, but if they called again, I'll write down the time and, and.
And.
And I will find out, I'll call and ask.
You have my cell number, you can call me anytime, any day. It's on twenty-four seven.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, they told me no one came out.
Did they request somebody?
So I don't.
You know if they requested officer or did they just ask for?
They, they, I told them, call the sheriff's department, they said, we've called sheriff's support.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Make sure you tell the constituents to make sure they ask for somebody, or if not, they just say, we want to report it. We don't want an actual car to go out and, so. One, but Fender, y'all have in Wilson County, I mean, in Liva County, is that a?
E M.
Can Wilson take you now?
Uh, sometimes they don't have a, that's what we take.
I'm not saying you're not doing your duty, I'm just saying they said no one came out.
Yes, sir. You go ahead and call the sheriff, or me anytime, we can get that call straightened.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
How many livestock, uh, called out that you say you have?
We have forty-five for the month today.
I think you have to repeat.
Uh, probably about half of those. The thing about a bunch of these.
Do you call out the same person a lot?
Probably twice. The thing is, the, a lot of the loot's livestock's that we get now, the owners are like from the San Antonio area, the Houston area, the Dallas area. So it takes sometimes a while to get ahold of whoever's taking care of their cattle.
Are there any fines being imposed on those people? Because I've heard over and over, you know, y'all be going after the same place lots of times. Picking up cattle, several officers, several vehicles, doing this, and there's nothing being done about them. You know, the owners being fined or something, they'll, they'll lie to us. It's gonna continue to happen.
Right, and if we don't, uh, make contact with the owner, we usually call the livestock, the, here in Karnes City, they'll pick them up for us, they'll advertise it for so many weeks, and if they don't claim them, then they sell them. And then we'll go from there. But we do, we do give them an opportunity, I dispatch, just call, the, try to get ahold of the owners, make several attempts, and if not, we'll send the cowboys out there. They haul them to the auction.
Sheriff, where did, where did the funds wind up? Where do the funds wind up once they sell?
Once, if we get it, if the funds, they come to us.
They go to the jury. It actually goes to the jury fund. So we're gonna, yes.
We've got the problem out of our mansion, people are going in on agents or, or companies and, and letting, leaving gates open and stuff. And that's what's happening to a lot of people. It's not that defenses are, are down or something, it's like livestock are getting out because of these things.
But like you said, we, we try to, we make an attempt to try to make contact with the owners. We get, put up a board, we call the owners, but we, if we have to, we do that.
E M S?
Okay, uh, E M S for the month of July, um, we had a hundred and twenty-five dispatch requests, uh, transporting ninety-two patients. Uh, thirty patient refusals. Um, had two canceled calls en route, um, twelve calls where required both units to be on scene. Uh, backup unit was used, a total of thirty-four times. Um, had eight air evacuations. Uh, didn't transport anybody out of the county that last month. Had one fire hazmat standby for a structural fire. Uh, as far as collections go, uh, the total Medicare we collected for the month was seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Of that, uh, sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-six cents was from the, uh, renewal of the Medicare. Uh, the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen monies we had out there that were, we, we got in this month. Um, so the, the current Medicare, uh, monies was actually thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Uh, commercial insurance, that's commercial, should say, commercial insurances, uh, self-paid. That's, uh, eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
You good? Thank you very much. We have a, you like some of the offices here? My place, huh? Now, I assume this young lady from Mopet, uh, Sallin?
Yes.
Could you tell us which kind of?
Oh, the, the letters have not been changed, they already changed right now, there was no notification given. They said that they can probably go back to the first of the year and pay you the royalties on the cruise unit from the first of the year, but it's changed effective now.
Okay, can they pay the royalties owed to the county back to the date of the acquisition?
No, sir, because nobody gave them notice that y'all purchased the property.
Well, were, were those royalties not paid or were they paid to the wrong owner?
They were probably paid to the wrong old owner. And we can try to get that back and once due, it will be forwarded to you, and that's what we will do.
I'd like to verify, you know, from, uh, Blackbush, that they indeed did pay somebody. You know, and who they paid to, and if it was paid to the old owner that, uh, that we, you know, I don't know how much money I'm talking about, you know how much?
It's not gonna be a whole lot. You talk about four acres in an eighty acre unit. It's an old well, I don't know what the production is, but it's not gonna be a whole lot of money. Now, the new well is the Eagle River, that's a whole lot of money, even with four acres. But the, the cruise unit is, it's a low producing well, I mean, it's produced steadily for years and years and years. But as far as the amount of money, it's not gonna be.
It seems to me like Blackbush is an accommodation to the county, how to go ahead and, since you're saying it's not a whole lot of money, how to go ahead and pay us all the royalties owed from the date that county acquired the property. I realize we didn't notify you, but, you know, you're also.
Well, and they had, well, no way of knowing that y'all owned it, and so we came in and looked at the records to find out who we needed to get amendments from.
I'm wondering if it is an accommodation and for our signing this lease movement, which enables your company to do some things they need to do regarding utilization. That is an accommodation to the county that they would go ahead and pay that royalty amount. Can you find out at least how much it is?
I mean, they have to go back over the last five years to figure out, you know, what is it they're paying to these people, I mean, they will try to.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sure that I have an accounting program that.
Sure.
Pull that up real quickly.
They can, well, I mean, they're looking at it right now, but I haven't gotten an answer back. I know that I will before this meeting, so I'll run the rig, so it can end next week on the horizontal though. They've already built a location out there. Which this doesn't change anything one way or the other. Y'all have no, we, they, Blackbush has been notified that you now own the property. They can either go back and pay you for the last four years, almost five years. Uh, if they can get the money back from the Duffys or not. They will go back for a year, they will go back to January. I don't know if he'll go back prior to that or not.
Right.
I mean, they can't, they can't, you know, follow every single interest.
No, I understand, I do understand that. The thing is, is an accommodation to the county. Uh, they might want to do this. Uh, I don't know whether it makes you want to make that condition, bringing in the amendment. But, uh, it seems to me that that would be something that Blackbush could do for the county, but we don't know what the scope of it being worked on. We're talking a thousand dollars total for this four years, we're talking about several thousand, or what are we talking about?
I cannot know.
My guess is.
I don't think so.
I don't know, we should why, I think, I don't be willing to pay it.
Well, in, in maybe a lot, you know, I, I don't know what to tell you there, they'll do whatever they can.
Right.
Uh, and if they didn't pay Duffy, if they didn't pay Duffy, if it's in suspense, they'll pay you all of it. If they didn't pay Duffy, they'll try to get it back. Duffy said they would go back for at least a year, they know they can do that. But they don't know that they can go back five years. The, the theme though is that this amendment and this horizontal well and unit is going to bring in some major income to the county. I mean, I, it's still only four acres, but you're looking at, they're gonna grow four wells immediately.
What's the size, either five hundred and sixty?
That's what it will be enlarged to, right now it's smaller than that because your acreage is not included, there's the, uh, rest of the pimble lease or cruise lease. So they're gonna add your twenty-six, or the twenty-six acre pimble lease, the twenty-seven from five acre cruise lease, and fourteen more acres of the Yoncha track.
Right. I would propose that we execute the amendment and I will deliver it to you upon your delivery to the county of the royalty owed for the past one-year period. And accounting to us saying who has paid the, the royalty that should have been paid to us from the time of the acquisition of the property to that one-year date. And then if it's not been paid to anybody, we'd be paid that pulling out of the royalty. If it's been paid to someone else, you're not gonna get it back from them. But, but if you're, uh, if for some reason they found out about the change and they just suspended payment, or whoever they were paying to send it back, said this is not ours anymore, we do want to be paid that one.
No, absolutely, there is no problem with that.
Right, you understand?
Yes.
What I'm saying? Right. Now, I'm going to move that we, uh, sign the long guest amendment, long guest lease amendment. Condition here paying us the royalty back one year from today, that is be paid on, on that well, the Edward Reap well that was in there. And that you'll account to us for the remainder of the time that we own the property. You'll account for the payment of the royalty. And if it wasn't paid to anybody, you will pay us back.
Right, I, I'll tell them that. Like I say, it, I mean, it would, y'all, just remember in the future, when y'all buy property or take over property, you need to notify the, the whole company that you-
You're absolutely right. We should have done that. I'm sorry.
Right. But no, I can tell them that. So, the amendment's approved, subject to?
Subject to, yes. Well, I, we've had a motion, second all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
I will sign the lease now, and it'll be ready for you to pick up with money.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
She a lawyer?
Uh, she's a layman. They don't own lawyers. Okay, we're working Roden Bridge Farm.
Good thing you know is, uh, we're going to hopefully start mowing this week. We're shutting down, never think of the Drew Dust President. Fine.
That stuff's not working too good, is it?
Huh?
It's not working too good, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you put it down on my road, it's terrible.
You're not dusty.
You're dusty.
Yeah.
Well, y'all did it right when they brought about four hundred trucks across the, and they watered it constantly, so it just washed a little bit off.
It's only good for night time. But anyway, we are-
They tried.
We're trying, yeah, we're trying. Uh, we are actually using K-3. And, uh, we're putting out a little bit more now than what we're normally being.
Yeah.
Uh, so hopefully everything will work on that. We're going to start our mowing. We're going to slow down a little bit. I know everybody's not happy about slowing down. Blame it. But I can't get water to these places, and all we're doing is mowing them.
Making them.
Yep, and, and I've been trying, and I've had this conversation. I already got seventy thousand dollars. I've been spending the water. And we're trying to get these roads back, but it just, right now, drives them into park. But we're trying. So, we're going to go back to mowing and see if we can get that done. And, uh, hopefully try some herbicide more. That's the only thing that I need to try, because I've got Georgia cane. Oh, my God. Yeah, that's a little wild, right? To try and get it, so.
Cane, oh. It's, that stuff takes some strong, kind of, you know?
Rain, that road has it and hooking, because everything is green and hot.
Yeah, it is. I wore it over my, my ride.
I saw that. I was like, thank you.
Man, it's real. I suppose some of it was some remedy, and people was being around, they were all three weeks together, and it, it, it made it sick, but it didn't get it all, man.
Well, see, this herbicide guy says he can actually control it.
Good.
I need to try it.
Yeah. Let me know what kind of pill probably he uses.
I'm going to find out, believe me. Other than that, we're, we're trying to get along. Uh, we're still a little possible putting our signs up. Hopefully, I can get my sign then to get out there and just stay on it instead of shifting them around. Hopefully, after October, I get enough hands to where we can start doing this. Any questions?
Nope. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, I am not reporting on cash and checking accounts at Falls City National Bank or total county cash. I can confirm as of June thirtieth, our total outside investment is thirty-six million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents. As I mentioned earlier, after several days, I completed an audit of the outside investments, identified the discrepancies, and the required correcting entries have been made on Monday, August eleventh. The balances as of July thirty-first have not yet been confirmed. A breakdown of the thirty-six million. The general fund has twenty-four million, two hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Roden Bridge has six million, nine hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Roden Bridge Special has four million, ninety-six thousand, ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Interest and sinking, one million, two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Rural Fire, five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. And the library, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars and sixteen cents. The cash balances are not being reported due to the inability to confirm bank balances. Uh, based on the county's balances available on the bank's website, six million, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents was on deposit in various non-interest-bearing accounts as of five P.M. Monday, August eleventh. July twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, Elizabeth Herrera, an accounting supervisor with A B I P CPAs, came with Janet Pittman, CPA, who is also with A B I P CPAs, the independent auditors, to retrieve information from the treasurer's office for October first, two thousand twelve, through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, to determine the discrepancies with bank reconciliations. Attached is an email from Elizabeth dated August seventh with the most recent report. I had an email from her late yesterday afternoon that she had a meeting scheduled at eleven this morning to see the status of that process. We still have not received reimbursement from the legal fees associated with the request of tax abatement by energy transfer. That dollar amount that remains unreimbursed is five thousand, six hundred six dollars and twenty-four cents. And we also have not received reimbursement from the historical commission that was requested and submitted on March thirty-first in the amount of ninety-four thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. And that was for the west wall of the courthouse, the final request.
Historical people that come around when they want something, they don't come around and pay their bills, huh?
I also attached a copy of the debt requirements as of July thirty-first, and as I mentioned earlier, the payments that were due in July were paid currently for the rest, remainder of this fiscal year. The only debt requirements we have are on our certificates of obligation and our two thousand and thirteen bonds, which are payable August fifteenth. Certificate of obligation payment will be two hundred and six thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and those obligations fund this building. And the two thousand and thirteen bonds, which are courthouse, jail, and Roden Bridge. All that's been sold out of those is the jail and one hundred thousand of the Roden Bridge. And that was, that payment that will be due is nine hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Well, one of the last page of your report, the email that was sent Thursday, August seventh-
Yes, sir.
At three twenty-five. It says, I have followed up the provisions on progress so far in the summary of some general filings, credit cards, deposits reflected in bank statements, approximately six days apart, but are in bank manager module as far as one month, or as one month. Those reconciliations proved to be quite extensive. Receipts are not in sequential order. Those we can tackle on different subjects. In some instances, we traced receipt, receipts noted on deposit slips to a budgetary accounting system report, and the totals do not match the dollar amount written on the deposit slip. Has anything been done to correct these issues or?
They have just identified their issues in this process. They will bring their findings, I'm guessing, once they complete the fiscal year that we need to complete the audit for, and then they will bring forward this fiscal year's bank reconciliation issues.
And how much difference are we at in, you know?
The last I was aware of it was right around fifty thousand dollars. That was more in the bank than has been receiveded in the accounting system.
So, you're saying there's fifty thousand dollars in the bank, according to bank records, they're not noted as being received by the treasurer's office?
Sure.
And did they note whether there was any substantial time between receipt of monies and deposit in the bank?
The only report, progress report I received has been this email, and it does not address timing of receipt and deposit.
Very good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Question?
Uh, Shelby, do you have a report on first round boxes?
I have a question report, Reese has one.
Reese, I'm sorry.
I just have one question. In the past, we've had these outside auditors, and they have their exit briefing. They have a nice little pamphlet they prepared that shows all the little discrepancies that they found in their, in their audit. We're going to have anybody or somebody like to record in the body. I'm going to review this once a quarter or something to see if the discrepancies have been fixed. My knowledge has never been happened. At least two courts have not done that.
I think we'll be addressing that. I said, I think we'll be addressing that.
Thank you, Frank.
Shelby, do you have any personal?
Somebody needs to, I'll tell you that.
All right, annexed as a report.
Carol, have you received anything on air condition? We, we approved to get the air condition thing. I guess he hasn't gotten anything done. He's working on his, taking work to get it done, I guess. But gee, I should be receiving something questionable soon on that.
John Lee?
Continue to work on whatever.
Anything else, please?
Oh, shift at, uh, our jail, uh, jail superintendent is leaving Thursday, I think. And so, maybe getting a jail, jail superintendent at the jail side.
Is it?
I'm watching real closely the, the status there. And I sent an email yesterday to Lauren Davis, forward to Haley Mills, of what I see. I'm staying on top of whatever.
He's leaving the company?
He's, yes, he's leaving the company. He's, he was offered a job with thirty-five hundred dollars more dollars. Never wouldn't, didn't want to match it.
Then just put any kind of delay and paying a good super benefit for that?
There is a man. I anticipate that I'm going to get someone to jump in and take it over right quickly. I don't know whether that'd be, the man from the office come down here.
Are we on the schedule, revised schedule?
As far as I'm concerned, we're probably a week, ten months behind in makeup schedule right now, and I talked to the manager of Haley Mills, the, the office owner, um, last week about it. And he assured me they're going to make it up.
Will they be able to proceed with contract if they don't have the superintendent now?
They'll have someone.
Okay. All right, James, anything on, uh, recycling?
No, everything's going smoothly over there. I just wanted to, uh, thank Mike Wallner, because we're still using one of his personnel to keep that open.
Tracy?
Uh, for the month of July, we took in thirty-six thousand, five hundred in permits, road entrances, and right away, about halfway was last one.
Okay. Any other business coming for the commissioners?
Judge, are we still drafting a resolution on the gap, on the saltwater?
Yeah, uh, and my apologies, the airhead's got a draft, too, as I had time to review it and revise it for the time.
Tracy, we know this from the mail, our office, we've passed it through miscellaneous filings. And I thought, from now on, I'm going to try to start giving those, a copy of those to the commissioner, whose precinct goes to part now. So, that's why I get it back.
But there's one fiction coming south with.
All right. Any other, any questions to the chairman?
I'll make the motion to the chairman.
Second it.
All in favor, aye. Thank you very much for your presence and participation.